Okay, I'll bring the Dunbar and Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Thursday, June 27. I have all three second present, Town Administrator is present. County Secretary is absent, she's doing it by recorder. Recording video for town is Don Larson, thank you, Don. Okay, gentlemen, I have some minutes, old business minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 13th meeting as amended.
I'll second Bob's motion. Any discussion, gentlemen, about that?
It looks pretty good. Just looking at it, so it's gonna be any changes.
All in favor, yeah?
Aye.
Okay. Gentlemen, we can sign this tomorrow.
Sure.
Alright, I have to open up the form for public comment. Just remember, please state your name if you have anything to say. First row, you're on the agenda, so your nominee will be coming up in a short few minutes. So if you're with us, if you have anything else you wanted to share with us, you may, okay. Back row, Chief, anything? Good, I'm good.
You have on the solar panels on the agenda tonight?
Just briefly about the cutting, how we have to have it inspected.
Okay, I'll put this on the general discussion. Fred Mullin, I went down there this afternoon, late this afternoon, just to take a look, see what they've done. They've got all the trees out of there, they cleaned up every branch that was around, they did a great job.
Okay, quick.
And where the panels are gonna go, it's been flattened out. Looks like a lot of flat lume there now.
That's what they did, Woody's email, he did say that they spread out the compost.
The compost, yeah, okay. All the branches, everything has got hauled off, there's nothing down there.
Good, good, so it's looking good from the town forest perspective, you say it's looking pretty good.
From an individual, yes.
Okay, off the committee, yes, okay, fair enough. Very good. We're gonna ask Mr. Boyd to go on down there too, since he's the coordinator, coordinator between Dunbar and the solar company.
Is that Dana?
Yeah.
He was down there today.
Oh, good, good. Maybe we just get a phone call, email to him, out to him.
Be able to assess more for the satisfaction.
Right, that's just one thumbs up or thumbs down. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, I just want to commend the fire department before we go on, Chief, and all the volunteers you had there. Good work on the barbecue, I heard no one, but no one was dissatisfied from my perspective. And I got there early, so I got my chicken right away.
I was dissatisfied, I was hanging, went by about 10 times and had to smell it.
Was it a good day for you, tickets sold?
Yep, good. Sold a lot of tickets, but it was such a nice day, some people didn't come.
So I could've swung in with my crew, huh?
Yeah, sure.
We had some extras.
Good job.
Okay, Don, anything?
Don Larson, Birchfield Drive. I just have a question in regards to the monuments out in front of the library. We don't have one for the Revolutionary War or for the Civil War, which we have quite a few veterans that are buried in that or participated, I got a whole list of them in that from Donna Dunn. And I was wondering what would be involved in getting monuments made for those two wars? And would it be a warrant article?
It depends how expensive the monuments would be, and then we'd have to try and pick locations for new monuments out there. So I think, I don't wanna answer from the whole board, but I think that, you know, depending on what size the stone would be and locations and all that, would kinda have to be, you know, approached to the board, and then we could kinda look at whether we wanna try and do with this something on the board level or put it on a warrant article.
Okay. Fred, do you wanna add something?
Yeah, that was brought up a number of years ago when they started doing the renovation of the town hall. They wanted to put a monument up for Revolutionary War, then they went to the French and Indian War, then they went to War of 1812, Spanish-American War. So at that time, it was decided if they put another monument up, just put up a general one for all the wars prior to World War I. As a one monument, but placement of it was gonna hinge on what type of landscaping and what type of work's gonna be done on the town hall, that's why nothing's been done at that time.
And that's work in progress, we don't know for sure.
Yeah, well, that's the reason why, 'cause they were gonna talk about putting it on the corner, if you face the front of the building, in the right-hand corner, but there was something about maybe changing some design of the building or something, so just put it on hold at that time.
Oh, Don, if, we don't know, if you wanna, if you wanna get estimates, we can at least start looking at it during the meeting.
Yeah, I was thinking that, you know, the two big wars, you know, or do it by, you know, the 1800s and the wars, and 1700s and the wars, or something like that. But you've got World War II and Korea on this side, those other two could go across that. You've got Vietnam at the top and World War I, you know, in front of the library itself. So, you know, we balance it out to an extent.
Because at least start looking at it. I think Dave is spot on with that, it depends, it's gonna depend on monuments and, Chief.
The request was to have a statue made with him on a horse, you know, so.
Okay, alright, with that, I'll bring it back to the board. Alright, Linda's not here, we'll defer Linda, we'll keep going, and do we have a check for somebody?
Well, the check will be written Monday night at your fire department training.
So I can make a motion?
Would it be?
Okay, I'll make a motion per RSA 31:95-B, Roman Number 3, Paragraph B, to accept a donation in the amount of $2,625 from the Dunbar and Firefighters Association to help pay 50% of a thermal emission camera.
Any discussion, Chief, I've got your paperwork on that, this is one imaging camera, you're gonna probably try to get another one for another vehicle?
Yeah, unfortunately, I was failed a couple of weeks before town meeting. And, you know, I might, I should've probably got to town meeting, tried to have some money out of account, but I didn't do it, so. I was talking to the association, 'cause I didn't have enough money in my budget to pay for it. And this is a lower-end camera, and they go from 52 to 12 to more, so, to get us by, I mean, we really need one. I said, well, we'll get the lower-end one, and the association agreed to pay for half of it.
Okay, probably just make, put it on the warrant for next year?
Yep.
Okay, good. Alright, gentlemen, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Yeah, and I think, thank you for giving us the update that you know you'll be adjusting your budget by that other dollar amount too, when you come to your budget.
Yeah, we might just take it out of equipment time?
Yep.
And that's, that's set up for us.
Okay. Okay, next item, this is the second discussion, continuing discussion on the croakers. Sir, I don't know if we met, again, Mike Demenski, Dave did a good job filling in for me, but we did some research, and I think the main issue here is we wanna get, how did we proceed? How did we get a path for you to get an application for a building permit and for you? And so I think we may have delineated a path tonight, and I'm gonna go over what I came up with and what the town administrator came up with, and she did a lot of work doing research and going back many, many years. First of all, Guinea Road, from Robert Rogers Road to the first house, that's where the Galvin driveway now exists, is now, is a Class V road, okay? That puts you into almost a shooting range of a Class V road. It's not a thousand, remember, it was, at one time was considered over 1,000 feet, it's not that. Portions of Guinea Road that have elapsed to Class VI due to non-maintenance still remain on that road, and so they're still Class VI. And that includes the property in front, the roadway in front of your property, okay? So to obtain a building permit, we're gonna probably require you to develop, bring that road up to town standards in front of your house, in other words, from the Galvin driveway to your proposed driveway. Once it's brought up to town standards, the town will maintain and repair the section of road as it would do with other roads in town. So, once it's brought up, we would plow it, grade it, and maintain it for maintenance on it as every year goes by. Okay, what standards must be made, I want streetlights and pavement, no, I'm only kidding. Standards are not gonna be determined by me here tonight. The standards are gonna be, in terms of repairing and upgrading a road will be made, to be determined, we made it planning board level. And they'll make the recommendations to the select board, to us, for road standards improvements. And we can say, we can accept them, we can lessen them, we'll make it more stringent. But the thing is, we're gonna rely upon the planning board for their input there. Now, I wanna point out, that road is also a scenic highway.
I'll get that out today, really.
Right, and as a scenic highway, there's some really concerns that they put on that road. Specifically, if, in the roadway, if there's anything like removal of trees or destruction or removal of stone walls, they have to be addressed before the planning board. Likewise, if you have to bring utilities up there, utilities, the utility company can't do a slash and burn on the way up there, just willy-nilly taking down trees, they have to go before the planning board also to discuss your plan. So there's two things that have to go before the planning board. One, to discuss, establish the road improvements in front, from that driveway to your house. And secondly, just discuss your plan as how you're gonna deal with any trees in the way and all that. And I'm gonna end up with one last thing before we go, and then I'm gonna open up your question. What I recommend strongly, and this has been universally across everyone I've talked to, is that we make a courtesy site visit between the road agent, planning board members, and a selectman prior to your turn, going before the planning board. That way, you have in your mind what needs to be done, visual, and all those key members will also be out there to take a look at it too. Now, I'll open your questions.
Just go back again, what part I will be responsible for?
Just from, there's one house on that road now.
That's Mike's?
The, yes, that.
Mike Galvin.
Galvin, from Galvin driveway to your driveway, wherever it may be.
See, go ahead.
Okay, in other words, there'll be, the thing is, there was some, there was banding back and forth, you have to maintain, bring the whole road up to standard, and that's unreasonable. And the thing is, you just have to bring the portion up from, probably to a very similar standard that is currently existing there now. It's not gonna be a request to have it paved with streetlights, I say that tongue-in-cheek, but it's, we're not gonna accept a ridiculous requirement like that. Because it is a scenic road, and the thing is, it's a dirt road, it's gonna be contained as a dirt road.
But in order for the town to maintain it, there'll have to be good base gravels put down and good finished coke gravels. Now, we had talked earlier when I was chairing the board or co-chairing it. Are you prepared, did you look at any of the distances from that driveway to your lot? And prepared for the cost of that, have you talked to anybody about that?
That's not gonna be, it's not chunk change, it's gonna be some dollars.
So I just wanna make sure, before we put the planning board and, you know, the conservation commission will be involved, 'cause it's a scenic road, and the select board, before we start this whole process, I wanna make sure that you've looked at that cost and that is something you wanna incur.
See, the last time we discussed this, it was gonna be from my, where my land starts, up to where we want the driveway. And it's almost three times the distance if I go from Mike's.
Right, and so you're going from Mike's to your property, and then a little bit beyond, 'cause the town will have to turn around, as we talked about. So, probably for a distance a little past your driveway, so we can have a proper turnaround, so.
Call it a hammerhead or something like that, so it possibly out there for the winter.
I would kinda like to have, look at some of the dollar values before we start this whole process, and it's something that you don't wanna consider, because that's...
Jeff had told us before that we complain on $35 to $55, but, so like you said, that's our chunk change. It's serious money.
Right.
I have no idea where we're going from here.
Would you like a little time to think about it before we start processing and going down that path?
Yeah.
Okay. But the next step, if you decide to go with that, I would probably, my next step would be contact through the building department or through Lean, so we can get a courtesy site review, a walk with you, when you're ready to do it. And then, based upon that, we can schedule appropriate meetings thereafter.
Yeah, and then the other thing, Mike, as a board, we'll have to talk about providing a waiver to go past the 300 feet of a Class V road.
Oh, but it's, oh, right, right.
As a board, we need to do that first, so, right now, what I'm hearing is they'd like to look at the cost and then come back to us if they do wanna approach that, so that's a, we wanted to tell you where it was gonna start from, and now you guys can measure those distances accurately and talk to some people in town about the cost of that, and then determine if you wanna come back to us, and then we go from there. But the biggest thing is, we as a board need to talk about the waiver, because there is a policy in place, as I talked about, we'll be from the Class V portion, 300 foot. If we go beyond that, we'd have to give you a waiver, that policy is in place right now at Classic Road.
What would probably happen is as they develop that road in front of their home, that wall, it will be similar standard to the Galvin portion.
Yeah, but we have to give the waiver.
Right, but it'll be brought up, that'll be considered, over time, it could be considered Class V road again.
Yeah.
So past our driveway, wherever it has to go.
They'll be considered Class V road, again.
Once it's upgraded.
There's a couple mechanisms we can do that, and I don't wanna get into details, but I'll put it this way, the town will take the responsibility of maintaining it, and eventually return to a Class V status. There's a couple mechanisms, but we don't have to discuss it here. But the bottom line for you all is, it will be maintained, plowed and graded as any other dirt road can be.
Realizing the size of the trucks that are gonna be plowing this, what kind of an area do I have to create for them to be able to turn around?
I would hold that question to the planning board of the roadie.
They would know the turnaround.
They don't know more than me. And then we have a planning board chair just walked in, I wanted to introduce him, I've never met him, is Ken Swayze, he's with a nice white beard there? Ken, you came in at the latter part, but do you have any comments that you wanna say that could be helpful to these folks?
Yeah, Dave, I don't mind, I'm gonna step into your territory a little bit. The 300-foot waiver that the selectmen established as a policy years ago was tantamount to a driveway extension. At that time, the average driveway in town was in the neighborhood of like 300 feet, or it'd be a reasonable driveway. And it would, it was put in place that at the end of, say, the Class V road where it starts to be Class VI, they could go 300 feet and treat it as if it was a driveway, including plowing it themselves or whatever. But it would've been typical driveway standards of, say, a residential thing. Now, if they're going to do some upgrade that the town is definitely interested in through this way you're talking, that would actually become a Class V road or a town-maintained road. It's a whole different complexion. The idea was not to allow people 1,400-foot driveways.
But Ken, in order to start the process, once you go past the Class V process, you, once you go past the 300 feet as a select board, we have to give them a waiver to that policy. If we don't give them a waiver to that policy, that policy is in place to get a building permit past that Classics Road. Now, I know once the road is upgraded, that will change the classification, but we can give them a building permit without even changing the classification of the road, just with the updated requirements as we send them to the planning board.
Okay, you could do that, but you're doing, you're just giving them an interim thing. The planning board, now, you understand, this is an existing subdivided lot. We don't have the jurisdiction as a planning board to invoke any requirements now.
Right.
It's all history. However, typically, we have other projects in town that this has happened on, and we do not allow the issuance of building permits as a planning board or a building department until the road is in existence for Class V roads standards. For instance, the Chan subdivision, even a road down here, the Souls, it was a one-house thing, technically on a Class VI road, but until it was brought up to the standards required by the planning board or the town, the building permit was an issue. Here's why, it's not like it's a subdivision road, you know, which is big. Now, technically, you probably could ask for a bond, and the idea is, that's just a suggestion. You don't wanna be talking Class VI roads anymore, we're not trying to do that as a planning board in this town. We're not looking to do that 300-foot extension. People have complained, there's also some legal aspects in other towns that is onerous. In other words, because some people say, I could never use it, but the answer is to try and get people to upgrade our roads.
Ken, did you, did you miss the part where Mike had said, before you come in, that we were...
I obviously missed it, it was before I came in.
If they, if they decide they wanna expend this money on that portion of road, which they're still in the process of determining that, then they're gonna go to the planning board for recommendations back to this board. That's right, so, you guys will do a full recommendation, and the conservation commission, because it's a scenic road, will chime in, and, you know, so we're gonna send them through that process, and we worked with town council to try and get this process laid out. And he said, don't worry about whether it's a Class VI or Class V road at this point, because at the end, we can make a determination as a board to upgrade that road or put it on a town warrant or whatever we wanna do, it's a bunch of different ways we can do it.
I agree, that's correct.
Yeah, so, we were trying to more get the process going for these people, but they still have some costs that they wanna consider at this point.
I was just trying to bring up that we have not used that policy by the select board in years, a long time. We've always tried to do the upgrade, and it's always worked out fine. It's been 300 feet, only because it relates to standard driveway.
Yeah, and then talking with our town attorney, he said that that seems too stringent, so we would do a waiver.
Yes, he's correct on that too, too stringent, yeah.
If they wanna go this route, we would start the procedure that way.
The process to get it going, and the bond is something I can see what the planning board has to say.
You know, that's something you guys could figure out, it's not really in the RSA's. On a subdivision, we have to accept a bond. You know, because the legislature says we have to allow them to start the process.
Right.
But, for instance, they, you could do the same thing, just a suggestion, but on subdivisions, they can start building immediately, get building permits, but you can't get a C on.
Right. What we're talking about, the thing is, you know, if you were decided tomorrow you wanted to build on it, and the road wasn't upgraded, technically, we said, well, you can't have it till the road is done. And so what we require, something we may require, is a bond for that amount of money, which would be refunded to you after you brought it up to standard. And that way, you could start the process. Can follow?
I think so.
Okay. Well, in other words, it's an opportunity to...
It's on 400 feet at $50, that's a 400.
Right, okay, well, that's, as Dave said, that's the decision.
And that's why, and that's why I want you to measure that distance from that last driveway that's maintained to where you'd like your driveway, plus a little bit for the town turnaround, then determine if you wanna spend that money, and then, you know, come back to us at that point, then we'll make the appropriate decisions, I guess, 'cause it sounds a little premature to me.
And we don't wanna corner you in tonight's making decision. It's your dollars, not mine.
Can I, one more thing?
Go ahead, Ken, please, who goes first?
Sir, what's your first name?
Sir, you're...
Hey, hey, let me just tell you something, in real life in Dunbar, seeing people before the planning board, if somebody puts in a full-blown subdivision today, where they buy a piece of land and they wanna put a road in, they could be paying $400 to $500 a running foot to build that road. I mean, it's very expensive to build subdivision roads, you're on a place where it's already subdivided. If your location, for instance, didn't have any other, all the lots on the other side, you bought a piece of property developed, and you couldn't put the road in and get lots on both sides, you would really be paying a lot more, 'cause you couldn't put any lots on that side. For instance, it was conservation land or somebody else's land, and they couldn't use the road or wouldn't go with it. This is not cheap stuff, I mean, anymore, this is really, you know, something that prevents builders all over, people with lots of money from doing stuff. We have tried, we're better than most towns on allowing liberally getting to Class VI roads. I personally, I'm not speaking for the planning board, I personally believe you have a right to use your land for residential living purposes. And for the last 10 years, we've been trying to put that in place at a reasonable cost.
I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Okay, so we look forward to hearing from you.
Yes.
And, but this first step would probably be a site walk first, and the thing is, I would let Ash talk, contact Lean, Town Administrator, and she can coordinate with the people. I'll be honest with you, she's gonna be out for one week, so, with the holiday, I don't think you're gonna be doing the holiday, but thereafter, we can get some people out there to do a walk with you, and that would be the next step.
Okay, thank you.
That would be the next step after we find out, no, that would be a first step first.
Right, in other words, I want you to do the walk before you go into the planning board, before, everyone has a grasp of what they're talking about when they come to a meeting. This is one thing to talk about, it's another thing to go out there with a road agent, giving opinions, and you can do this, you can do that, this is what I expect, you have expectation before you go into the meeting, in a visual.
So if we contact you, and we say that we would like to go up and start the proceedings, doesn't mean that we're going to do it?
It just means that you're gonna do a walkabout and just look at...
That we're interested, and we wanna see what our options are.
Correct.
And you'll meet with the planning board member, a selectman, and a road agent, so that everyone can be on the same page. Would you call that a consultation meeting of some sort? That they'll advise you as to what you can expect and what would be best for you and for the town for that section.
But again, you know, that quick math on the distances there that can be done, and then you can determine, you know, if you wanna go through that process, so.
Okay. Okay, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
So what we're saying earlier, there are different ways of becoming a Class V road again. Do nothing, it becomes a Class V road. Go to a town meeting, we can have it voted on as a Class V road, or lay it out, it could be laid as another meeting. So there's different mechanisms, I didn't wanna go into details for them, because if we just do nothing, it'll become a Class V road.
Technically, they could do that, you know, go to the town meeting and say, we wanna make this a Class V road and to have no upkeep, no new construction or anything, if the voters vote yes on that, it's a Class V road.
And just for the record, I learned more about, this is an interesting book.
Yeah, Hard Road Travel, yeah.
And we used to have one copy in here and disappeared, so Lean bought us each a copy.
That's a great, did you, Lean, that's good, he's excellent.
And what I found about scenic roads is that the town can maintain the road, a scenic road, pretty much any way it sees fit. So, the thing is, we were worried in the past, were we maintaining that road when we shouldn't have been? This is Guinea Road, and not really, we can maintain it as we see fit, as a town sees fit, and we'll talk about selectmen and the road agent.
Another way to get away with that, on this, doing scenic roads, for instance, is that the RSA requires that the road maintained by the town all year round on a seasonal basis. And if you don't plow it, for instance, it's still a Class VI road.
Yep.
Okay, now, I just wanted to reemphasize, we thought as a board, it'd be good to go through the planning board and the conservation commission and have the input from those boards come back to us, then we can make final decisions or decide if it's good or bad for the town, but having a board like that look at it, where they do roads all the time, we thought was a better avenue to go through.
By the way, you could put George on, because he's on the planning board too, he's also on the conservation commission.
I've already talked to conservation commission to this evening, President Clare, and I gave him a heads up that it may be a joint meeting, he'd be willing to entertain that.
That's good, yeah.
He'll bring it to his members. Okay, moving on, Linda, welcome, come on up, share some good news, I was starting to brag about you earlier.
I've been, I've been busy licensing dogs, ooh, down to 39 dogs.
Oh, my. It was just, gentlemen, it was just 50 two days ago, but then...
It was 50 this morning, exactly, it's 50 this morning, so, you know I've had a lot, ended the month for cars and...
So do we have to talk more to dogs when they all say that?
No, we're still...
There's a procedure. So, what happens now, this is my letter to the Board of Selectmen, just asking you to issue a warrant.
A warrant?
Warrant for the PD to collect the civil forfeitures. So I have taken the liberty of preparing a warrant, so you don't have to. I made three copies, so you can have a copy for your records?
Yep.
And then a copy for me and a copy for the police chief?
Yep.
So I signed those three. Just a reminder that that list is protected by statute, and is as confidential as so many of the other leads that we handle. If you recognize anyone on the list who you know has moved out of town, it'd be a great help to the PD, not to...
This letter you're speaking about will go to 39 pages.
These people, along with several hundred others, already got emails in March, if they had an email address, and it didn't go to their spam. We hope, and I sent out well over 200 letters, actually, Hope took care of all of it, sent out over 200 letters in May to people who had still not licensed their dog, and that 200 letters represented almost 400 dogs, somewhere between 300 and 400 dogs, because some people have multiples.
Okay, so that happened when, in May?
In May, so they...
And then what happened after that?
They were given deadlines, as I stated in my letter, and if they didn't come in by the deadline, then by law is when I turn over the list. Chief Sclut graciously offered to take that list and preview it and make some phone calls before physically knocking on people's doors. So Laura Catabriga made a lot of phone calls to people, saying, you need to license the dog, or this is what happens, or next we have to issue the civil forfeiture at hand. So the phone calls made by the PD, specifically Laura, went a long way to getting this list cleaned up.
Can I ask you a question?
Just 'cause I get no respect, 'cause they ignored my letters.
Can I ask you a question? Did they call everybody?
I gave them, they have phone numbers, I gave them this list on an Excel spreadsheet. I gave them, they have phone numbers, I gave them this list on an Excel spreadsheet.
Did they call everybody?
They did not tell me they called everybody, but I'm pretty sure that they did, because Laura spent a couple of weeks making phone calls.
I know they did call some people. I just want to make sure, if we went through a step, we were...
They're not required to call?
I know they're not required, but if somebody comes back and says, why did that person get called but I never got called? That's what I'm worried about, I was wondering...
Inconsistency, that's all it is.
Right, exactly.
If some people are getting a favor of a phone call and some are not, that's what I'm worried about.
If the police call, excuse me, it's time for me to take my bird feeders in, my alarm just went off.
Don't worry, this is his.
My bird feeder reminder. The bear's gotten too many of them, sorry about that. PD's not required to call, but they do, and I think Laura had mentioned there was one person she couldn't get hold of, but I know they really might fall out.
So you think they call the majority of them?
Yes, I'm sure they've touched just about everybody on the list, but everybody on that list was sent a letter.
One?
One letter, that's, we're not required to, except for that one, the notice that they're going to get the civil forfeiture. That's the only letter we're required to send, and we have met that requirement.
Can you remind me, did we send out a second letter last year?
We did not.
When this came up, last year?
No, we did not.
Wasn't that the direction you guys gave her to even send out the second letter?
I thought so.
And that's where you did it this year?
The last year, I believe it was left that, because we weren't in the parameters of the timeframe, that we let it go, that we not have the police pursue it, but I pursued what I could. Some of the people on that list got letters last year as well.
So they got the standard, they got the standard notification?
Right.
And then they got one letter?
Standard notification.
That their dog licenses are due?
There's no standard notification, the town's not required to notify them. The responsibility is on the owner.
So in, in May, let's say they're all due.
Third, yeah, they're due April thirtieth.
April thirtieth. And then they have one letter since then?
So those who didn't come in by May...
Got a letter.
Right, got a letter to say and come in. And then after June rolled around and the deadline had passed, that's when the police started making phone calls.
I just want to be clear on the steps, Linda, I don't...
No, that's okay.
Have a dog any longer, so I don't really...
Well, I find it interesting, the majority, a significant number of them were registered last year, so it's not like they, I mean, one year, they were just registered a year ago.
Right. Now, a few of those people on the list, and I will go over this with the PD, I have a more inclusive list that has their phone numbers and email addresses, which is what I send over to the PD. This is on an Excel spreadsheet. But there are a few people who I know are about to have a vet appointment. One has a vet appointment tomorrow at seven forty-five, one has a vet appointment Monday. So I know that there are people who are really working on vetting the dog. And I'll let the PD know so that they can put them at the bottom of the list.
I was saying, as you said to me earlier in the week, it's about rabies and they have to get the rabies certification so that before they get a license.
Correct.
No, this letter would go out to the residents that are on that list, right?
Letters already went out.
This...
Do you want to see a sample of the letter that went out?
This warrant will go out.
No, that's just, they're getting her permission to serve that.
You're asking the police department...
Who's serving it, when does it come out, who's sending it out?
I'm asking you to issue a warrant to the police department
Yeah.
to collect the civil forfeitures.
So each person will get this notice in May?
No, no.
No, that's like the tax warrant that the Board of Assessors signed. We create the warrant, an authorized board signs the warrant, and that allows the tax collector to collect it? In this case, it's allowing the police department to collect it.
That's a great way of explaining it. This is allowing the police department...
So when are the people going to get notified of this twenty-five dollars?
They already have been, in that letter that she sent in May.
Right, I've been collecting it, everybody who came in after their deadline, I've been collecting it when they come in. Now the police physically go, and they issue it along with quickly. It's issued on a special, like a dog violation form, along with if you don't...
So the police department will be running around to all of these houses to hand out?
Which is why they were making some phone calls to eliminate that running around.
Thirty-nine is not better than a hundred and forty last year. Or than a hundred, it's a hundred and fifty last year, I'm sure.
And so we have thirty-nine left on this list?
Correct.
And...
That's it, we're down to thirty-nine.
Compared to a hundred and fifty last year.
And of those thirty-nine, I know for sure, three of them have vet appointments within the next couple of days and will be in on Monday morning, because they are aware that I have to include them on the list because they are not officially licensed yet.
Is there a date you're required that we send this out?
Is there a one?
No, what's the timeline that we missed last year?
We waited a week to send this out, is that going to cause a problem?
No, that, his signing, those, she gets a copy, Lean gets a copy, the chief gets a copy.
Right. Is it going to be a problem if we sign this in two weeks instead of tonight?
I'd have to go back and look at the statutes and see what your timeframe is.
Basically, I recall last year, there's a window, we missed the window.
There's a window and we missed it. And I don't want to miss it this year because we've done such a great job of getting this list cleaned up.
I think this is probably one of the best years you've had.
I've got some great help with my deputy.
I'm not David S. now.
Oh, sorry, you're David A.
And Jane, and Jane.
All right, it's good, right over it.
Anna, what do you notice about some of the police department helping to collect these?
I, I think it's, we don't have any other enforcement agency. There's no dog catcher in town, there's no, I mean, to me, I have no problem. You have to run around town anyways and...
We can send a certified letter, but that can get ignored just as easily as the emails and the previous letter got ignored, and then the police are going to get some.
How many people were on this list before the police department called around?
I'd have to go back and look, but it was triple.
You were thinking just off the top of your head?
It was triple that.
Triple?
So a hundred and a half or...
Yep, it was a hundred and a half.
Some of those people may have moved, some of those people, they may not have been able to get hold of because they moved. Do you?
Some of the dogs have died.
You know, but I don't see a problem with signing it and, you know, if you're starting to get to some of the people, the word may get around it, you know.
Tommy's business, and the thing is, it's a public safety issue too.
It is a public safety issue and it's...
Because what's happening is people are finding that they're forcing the owners to go to the vet because they have to give the vet, the rabies vaccination. And that's what it's all about.
I think it's a law that they have to get a rabies shot, I'm pretty sure that it is. But it's, the PD involvement has been great in cleaning up that list. You know, the letters that I sent out initially, you know, I get so many responses and then the responses stop coming in, but with the police department making the phone calls, now I'm getting additional stuff that says their dog passed away, the dog was rehomed. So had I known that, had the dog owner notified me right away and said, I don't have my dog, the dog passed, I could have taken them off the list, and that would have been one less phone call the PD had to make. But it's, it's got to be a group effort, you know, the owners have to kind of understand that we are required to maintain this and to follow up.
Now, I think the police department, when they get a call from the police department, you know, this is serious business, I mean, it's not, it's not being bold to just, oh, just blow it off like I did last year.
Right, because in the past, I have not had the staffing to...
To really pursue it.
This is, this is, takes a monumental amount of time to keep on top of this, to, to get the list to that point, so.
I, I have no problem, Ken.
I don't have a problem either. It's not any different than an unregistered vehicle. Except this one runs on full lane.
We've got over seven hundred dogs in town. That's a lot of dogs.
Almost one per family, on an average basis.
And that's just based on the, the dog license number, that doesn't include, there are some people who have a group of five or more dogs that only get to shoot one tag. But I, I have to commend the police department for really working at getting the list to this point. They've done a fantastic job. But I, I know their time could be best used elsewhere.
Well, it's, we don't have a huge crime rate, a crime wave in here and...
But still.
It's, it's, to me, it's part of, part of responsibilities of contributing to the community.
That it is.
And it's not, it's not about making money for the town. It's definitely not a moneymaker. Although, small increases may have helped a little bit.
It will help offset it, and it'll really just cover, you know, the materials, the tags, the...
Exactly.
Well, hopefully this updates your list so we don't have to do this every year, because I'm not particularly in favor of some police department running around with those.
Wow.
No, but the law says, you know, I'll take out the statute for you.
We missed it last year and the law didn't come down on us.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Think, think of it, think of it as Dunbar's, a safer time.
Maybe we do it every three years and send a police department out.
Yeah, I got this deputy who might be town clerk one day and I have to set a good example, so I got to clean out my act so that if, when she takes over, she's doing it the right way.
Okay.
No, another note.
Yes.
They're polycarbonate glasses available at Amazon. They're twenty-four inches wide, which is a width of your desk, by thirty-six inches. So it's...
I'll talk to her about it, so thank you.
And then, I think it's ninety or ninety-nine dollars. But the thing is, they'll last, it'll, plexiglass, you're going to replace it in a couple of years because you won't see through it. And this is a lot better than... You should know, because there are any glasses with that?
Oculus glass, not plexiglass, polycarbonate, yes.
Polycarbonate, yeah.
About three feet's there.
The joke was with polycarbonate, it's, you could take a twenty-two caliber bullet, shoot it about fifty, twenty-five feet away and it would, it would stop the, the frame, the lens would not shatter. I won't say much about the frame, the frame may not hold the lens, you may have the lens in your head, but the thing is, it'll stop, it won't go through the lens though. It'll fall out of the frame.
Who uses a twenty-five?
Oh, they're out there, little Saturday night specials.
Tell you that desk makes all the difference in the world.
Go ahead.
What about this desk here?
Oh, I was going to, I don't think anybody wants it.
I think I had someone in the office that was kind of interested in, but did you have any plans for that?
If, if it's going to go to the dump, I'd love the, the top itself. But I have no use for it in the office.
And so Linda said that she was going to try to find legs for the other top that's slightly damaged, so that she can create...
Right, another nice work area.
Another nice work area.
Which is fine, just work with Lean on, on this one.
List of things to do.
Yep, and the thing is, if, I'd like to see that out of here maybe two weeks.
Oh, yeah, no, it'll be gone by next year.
If, if no one else wants it, go for it. If, if, if three people want it, do a raffle, who have someone coming in?
I'm interested in the counterpart for myself. So we'll draw for that or something for that, but as far as using the desk itself in my office, no.
Okay.
I thought Donna didn't want it.
Oh, yeah, no, she said it would be a work station.
Yeah, it goes, it's needed within the department, in the town.
Yeah, I don't have the room for it, it's...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, right, I need to collect some papers from you.
Right here, two copies plus all the paperwork you had. And my, my, yeah?
And that is a letter to you. Yeah, so that's all the package for you, thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to continue with the mailbox, if I could. We've got a great letter from Senator Kavanaugh. He gave us a summary of the budget and it's two, if it passes without being unrestricted, the town may get sixty-seven K approximately in unrestricted revenues and the school will get ninety-three K in unrestricted revenues. And totaling of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars back to the town. It's in the budget right now. It was just an update from our senator, so thank yous to our senator for keeping us abreast of what important things there. The thing is, it's, whether it's passed or not, there's going to be some negotiation with that. The budget fight is not over yet. All right, moving on. We get the fire departments done. This, thank you, Lean, there was just on, there was a graveside service for Mrs. Crosby who passed earlier this year. I, I represented the selectmen there and it was a very nice ceremony. It was in the paper, if anyone wants to read that, Concord Monitor on May twenty-second. Got an update from the, Woody gave us a great update about the, what's going on at Transfer Station. Basically, remember the sinkhole has been eliminated and burn pile has been burned.
It's been burned?
No, it's been burnt, I saw it dismembering the other day. New pickup is in the shop, getting worked on, it's good news. He's getting all the accessories installed. And as a corollary of that, we already talked about the...
Tree trimming.
Tree trimming, we're just going to get an update on that. There's one application people have. Yeah, what I'd like to do is, that's a summer worker, I don't want to delay this. I would say, normally there was one selectman sits on the meeting?
Right, well, she's going to get Joe Marie.
Okay.
Get in touch with Joe Marie and Woody.
Okay.
And whatever's convenient for them, I'll modify my schedule, I can be there. So I can hire him right away.
Yeah, rather than waiting two weeks for, bringing for the whole board, I like to have a vote for the board, they give you the authority. If you feel the candidate is acceptable, make the hire, what do you think, Dave?
It's just for part-time summer help and I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, I'd rather get it going rather than waiting.
And if Woody, it seems that he's interested in him anyhow, you know, and I don't, I don't want to slow them up with not having enough help.
Yeah, so if you, if you give a thumbs up, I think you have consensus from us that you, we're going to give you the go, green light to make the decision. Okay?
I don't have any problem with that. We'll still make a formal motion, Bob, a week after, but I don't have any problem with that.
Right, get him in the pipeline.
The other thing, while we're on that subject, Woody has a volunteer and in his letter, he's asked us to talk about that, to see if the volunteer can work down there. My suggestion, if the volunteer wants to work down there a substantial amount for Woody, we should make sure that he has the proper gloves, the proper safety glasses, and the boots.
Yeah, I think they have to, they have to be equipped the same as anyone else.
So what about that? Woody's asked us a couple of times, get back to him now on that?
I have already, I asked for more information because I think you guys as a board couldn't decide not knowing whether he would have the boots and...
We'd like to know, I guess, how much, how substantial of volunteer the guy wants to be because that's some additional summer help you could draw on. And I think if we equip the person, as Bob says, I don't have any problem with that volunteer either.
I'm going to tell you, they've had, they've had people that are doing community service stuff working, so it's not a big issue, and for the cost of a pair of boots. If the guy's going to work there for any amount of time, I think you're getting a bargain. And he's got someone that he can rotate into that process, because that's his problem.
Yeah, my biggest concern is that they have the same safety equipment that...
Yeah, but I don't want to see this gentleman being used to offset workers who are working and losing hours. I just want to make sure that doesn't happen.
Yeah, that's right, right. To fill in during vacation.
That's one thing, but not to, not to save, try to save a few dollars on someone else.
You know, if someone wants a Saturday, Saturday off, a weekday off for some reason, utilizing it, that would be the last, you don't want to take hours away from someone.
Next week, do you want to maybe have him come in just to chat with you at the same time you're doing the interview? Next week, do you wanna maybe have him come in for a just a chat with you at the same time you're doing the interview? Bob?
Who's that?
The volunteer?
Well, he's gonna, he's, we're gonna meet with the volunteer.
No, no, this is not a volunteer, this is gonna be a paid employee, this one.
That's a paid employee.
Oh, that's a paid employee.
Yeah, I don't know who this volunteer is.
Yeah, maybe we should let Woody, well, yeah. We must have some information.
Yep.
He can come in and just talk with, chat with Bob.
Maybe in the direction is to give Woody a direction that this isn't, you know, to take away hours from someone else in order to get a volunteer.
Well, why don't we have Lynn put an email? We wanna make sure that the volunteers use not to take away hours.
Well, I think that can be done personally with Bob, Bob's gonna be meeting with him in next week. I don't think he has one email. I always stay away from email if I can.
Do you wanna communicate that to Woody when you meet with him?
Sure.
So I'll work on getting
It's probably easier that way because sometimes people, like I said, people don't read emails the way you intend that they're gonna read them.
Okay, are we done, can we move on? Okay. Next item was the the coffee house over here wants to put a banner up for a month. Remember how they had a banner when they had the grand opening? They wanna put a banner up again. And I guess it must be for the month of July coming up.
You know, Mike, it's the summer months and I don't really have a problem with the banner and you know, I think it is nice to have that restaurant available to the townspeople. It gives them a little bit of publicity and increased business so that they can stay in business.
Didn't they have, did they have a trouble with the original banner because of the weather when it went up?
I don't remember. It was the middle of winter. I don't think it was really
They had to change the direction of it because I think it worked out better for, between the trees, but
I just wanna ask one question to Dawn. When's your banner going up for, for the
Our old home day?
Yes, sir.
We'll probably put them up around mid-July.
I don't wanna have too many banners up here, I
But we'll, we've got one on the commons, we've got one in the community center. And I'll put pages corner, I got three other banners and they're double-sided, so they'll be able to see.
Okay, I don't wanna actually have one banner up, they can use the, put their banner up until it's ready for old home day. Is that all right? What do you think, gentlemen?
I don't think it matters if there's two banners.
His is on the other side already, on the other side.
Okay, all right.
I know his location, so.
All right, and that was one item with them, so we have
I wanna make sure to do, I wanna make sure to do the month, make sure that that's highlighted.
Okay, one monthly. Now, the second item is Jason, Jason, Justin. Justin had competed to do, competed with a contract, not a contract, but a bid for the bathroom. He can't do it. And the question is, he asked if we had the alternative, other people on the list, we should pursue it. I need to see, we need to see those bids again.
Okay, in the, in the process, we have this gentleman Matt that we were going to hire and he's a handyman. I've asked him to take a look at the bathroom, see
You talking about Matt Bashel or?
No, it's
Do we use the last name, should we?
He's the one that repaired the library door.
Yeah.
Okay, and so he said he would give us, he would take a look at the bathroom. And then he's, based on our joint loss meeting, there were a few other things that I have to address within this building that I'm gonna have him take a look at.
So you'll bring that to us anyway? Okay, when you do that, Lynn, can you bring out the original bidders to?
The two bid, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Give it to me in word for word at first. Okay. This is, we gotta theme our notification, an update on flood control maps. And there's gonna be some public hearings for them. These are risk, flood risk review meetings, also known as workshop meetings for communities to review their work maps. It's gonna be in Massachusetts and Hayrow, Manchester and Concord. We need to have someone attend, I think someone with some experience.
Ken should go.
I'm thinking someone, consider the chief fire department maybe?
I've actually, the first time the maps came up, it was handled by this office where I was. I did ask Donna if she would be interested in representing the town because she would be the department that the people would go to if they had to inquire as to whether their property is in the flood zone. She said she'd be willing to go, probably in an hour or two.
So Donna would?
Donna would be interested in going.
Ken, you gotta copy the letter in case you wanted to go too.
I didn't see it.
It's in the mail.
It's in your mail basket.
The other thing too is the conservation commission was mainly aware, which they have the flood control briefing for the town, so maybe Donna could reach out to see if Brett is gonna go as well.
Just from the board's information, when they first set that up, it was determined that there are no homes in Dunbar in the flood
Thank you for saying that, I was just gonna bring that up.
The only areas that are potential flood areas are the Army Corps of Engineers and there are no residential homes in that area.
The key thing is, Donna's gonna reach out to those people, we got RSVP on that.
Yeah, okay.
No hunger, flood zones or anything?
Can I, quick history?
Sure.
We spent a lot of time at the planning board level because we hosted that whole thing, we had to do it. Federal funds, she was around, you were around for that. We go through this whole ordeal, mapped things out, had a fellow here from FEMA, a woman on occasion, and many a meeting. And at the end, I got a certified letter saying we don't qualify for anything.
Because we don't have any
We don't have anything.
Yeah.
But, we can't issue any building permits in a flood zone. So, that's what came out of it. And it's a whole chapter in our zoning ordinance. Which means absolutely nothing physically.
Okay, thank you Ken. You hanging on GSC?
Yeah, I love the government sometimes.
Are you ready for the next one?
Uh-oh, yeah.
Okay, moving right on, I got an update from the, from the building and planning and zoning. It seems like we have approved some, a site plan which was approved and submitted yet the gentleman is obviously using the property because I can see horses on his property and he's not completed his work. And he said he does not intend to do further site work until he talks to, he once talked to the road agent. So he's in violation right now of the stipulations delineated by the planning board.
Well, do we know he's in violation?
Yes, because the work is not completed. It's a drainage into the road on Kimble Pond Road. That's what went up.
For instance. Now, I did see Billy Nichols working there on that roadway.
A while ago.
This sprint, right?
Yeah, I heard you.
Was it a month ago?
This is within a week. And he doesn't plan to do anything else, so, thing is, I'd like to maybe have the road agent, who's also member of the planning board, just talk to him about, especially the drainage, and I don't know about the other places. He doesn't intend to do further site work, so, thing is, we're gonna have to deal with this whether it be, it might be problematic down the road. And I'm gonna ask for the planning board, maybe if they could just, when I come to you, this, at the next planning board meeting, maybe we gotta come up with a summary, and so, we may have, we may require
Can I add something to this whole mess?
You go ahead right ahead.
Well, the thing is, he went through a big process. It wasn't just with the planning board, it was with the zoning board, and it was with the conservation commission. There were lots of restrictions on that property. Went through it, spent a lot of money. And then he came to the planning board with all that, his history, and wanted to have a commercial operation and it was a well-done project, well-prepared project. There were some things that he ultimately didn't like. He came back to the planning board, we had a review and lessened the impact of some of that drainage requirement. But now the rumor or the statement to others is that he just wants to have it continued as a project as others have in this town like Patty Sheeran and who's the lady over on, which, oh, the doctor lady has a big barn?
Oh, oh.
West Hill Road, I don't know.
Yeah, Yuki Igari?
Yeah, that's it.
So hers is definitely private.
That's it, that's what I'm talking about.
Right.
So they have private, big buildings, they ever had to go to the planning board, didn't have to do anything. They, building department over the years is certified. I even checked out Patty Sheeran's place one day, a long time ago. People thought she was having a big commercial thing, not true, looked on the internet, the whole bit. Okay, so we got two, it's not just those two, but there's two big, similar operations. Then we got
Caterstables.
Caterstables, which didn't even have approval from the first phase because we didn't have stuff in the zoning book work. So, Mr. Botnick also wants to just be treated like that. He wants to be reduced to a regular operation, you know, like personal. Well, that's okay, maybe he could do that and he spent a lot of money, but he doesn't get away with the road agent's requirement on that plan. Now, he changed the scope of his place, right? There was supposed to be two buildings and an apartment above one.
Okay, that, that's true.
That didn't go, so it's totally his operation.
He's still entitled to do that, but he's gotta continue this site plan.
Right. Now, I know there was work done there and in reading Mike's brief there, he says that he plans not to do any more site work, but he doesn't say the site work is incomplete in this letter to us.
Who, who's the letter from?
Mike comments.
I thought so.
Okay, so
He should say
So he doesn't say to me it's incomplete, so I read that just a few minutes ago and it says that he doesn't plan on doing anymore, but I know from driving by there, there was a lot of work down there this way.
You mean the left-hand side where the road, yeah.
The driveway was upgraded, there was parking put in there, there was some more roadway down around the barn. I'm just seeing it from the side of the road. I haven't even driven up to the barn.
All right, so
So I don't know if it's
And let's get, let's get a clarification, if this is unclear, Mike's gotta give a little
I don't know if it's not complete or incomplete.
That's what we need to know, information.
That's a perfect, good example, we need to know officially what it is. But some of the things that he wants to not complete, he might be entitled to, but some things he can't get
Right, and I don't You just gotta delineate that.
I can't tell from this letter what is done or not done. So I don't wanna come down on a homeowner or a landowner or a barn owner without knowing what is complete, what's not complete, you know, as a board.
Well, I don't wanna come down on him, I think at this point, we have to get some more information.
Right. He was also, you know, he's out there on a limb. How you stop commercial operations, you let them proceed, we filed the plan. So, that's on the record already as a commercial operation. But the thing we have, just like with a Burger King or a restaurant, is they can't get a permit to use and occupy the premises until they fulfill the site plan in Concord, Goffstown, anything, just like that. That's not happening here. And what I'm trying to say is, I think it's absurd. The guy's a very smart businessman, something's odd here, very odd. Now, he's complained about this work that Jeff, well, it was got very expensive, like thirty thousand dollars or something and he came back later, asked for minor modification, we gave it to him, he had his engineer in tow. And now, he doesn't wanna do that, I guess. I'm, I'm speaking like we don't know. We don't know if it's done or not done, I, I can't drive by and tell because I don't know what's I can't tell by that letter what the problem is.
Let's, let's ask Mike some questions here, he needs to be very specific about what's not completed, what's completed.
What do you have Mike? Why don't you yank him in?
No, but before the next meeting, I want some more answers.
I think the person that could answer this is the road agent because he knows that there
Yes, but there are other, other check
The plan that was filed showed a retention pond of some sort.
Well, that's the biggie.
That's the biggie that he does not want.
But other things that, you know, apply to the building or the use. I, I went by there several times, somebody says there are horses in there and he's got some activity. That's not allowed right now. He doesn't have permit to occupy and use the facility. And it's not much to do that. And, and I don't know what's done or not done, and like you said, we need a list of what is and what's not done. Whether Mike needs to bring Jeff with him or whoever he needs to inspect it or whatever, but right now, it's very vague and I can't, we can't
No, we are, I think we have consensus.
Ironically, they did an excellent engineering job, there's no problem with the site plan on this thing, it's just not done.
All right, Lynn, you know, you see where we're headed, we need more information for sure. Of what, what specifically is not done?
I did see where Mike did tell the homeowner that he needs to come back because if he's downscaling his site plan with you people and not gonna do some things or it is and wants some more consideration, then he needs to come back to your board for that consideration. We have to revoke that plan. Somebody sees that a future buyer, something yanks that out of the registry, they can put in that apartment. Think about that, I mean, that's just one example. But if they do it by the plan, there's no problem with that. Right, if he finishes the plan, he has a right not to do that right away. Right. But if it's on a filed plan and if he's not gonna do that, he's gonna maybe shorten it up somehow, we have to file a revocation that's legally filed.
Yeah, okay.
Anyway.
Lynn, do you have enough? Okay. All right, we got these fishing game permit to trap. Does, do I have to sign this or no, I don't?
Yes, you do. He accidentally, the one filling it out accidentally signed his own name, but you need to sign this, it's a selective.
Right here, right there, okay. Just let you know, this is, this is for some beaver trap elimination, beaver elimination who are blocking some of our coves along the road agents
Only within our right of ways.
Right.
Right.
Not on people's properties.
And the conservation wanted, made very clear that they do not want conservation land, town forest land, other land owned by the town trapped, that this is strictly under those guidance and direction of the road agent when he needs the assistance to remove loose beavers in the town.
For how long is this good for?
One year.
Okay, and
And about again next year. But, and as in the past
It just stayed right on their town right of ways and coves.
Right. In the past, there were old timers that would do this as a retirement hobby. Now, there's no money in it to, you know, to get rid, get rid of the pelts and animals, so they have, do have a fee associated with removing per beaver and Jeff is aware of that, I think we talked about it a little bit last year.
Yeah.
That there would be a cost and
Were they gonna charge us to get rid of the beavers?
Yeah, they're saying that they're, right now that they can see three beavers that are involved with this problem. So
Maybe we should have went to the trappers association and see if we could get them done for free.
Don't they exist anymore?
No.
Oh, the trappers association?
That's good.
Okay.
Good idea. I didn't know we were paying for it, I saw the hundred dollars on it, I thought that's what they were gonna go for a beaver pound.
All right, mailbox is empty for now, I'm gonna open a public comment again. Dawn, anything, good? Back row? Anything for public comment?
Public comment, guys?
Any more public comment?
No, what was it?
All said? Enough said, Dave, I'm gonna bring it back to you.
I brought up my only issues there, one other thing
Hey, register your dog, will you?
My poor dog passed away. I did read with New Hampshire Fire Protection this week.
Okay.
And he said he would be more than willing to walk this building with us and talk about some sort of sprinkler system to protect our building, whether it's dry or wet or however. He says he does it every day of the week and he has no problem giving us a estimate that we could kinda summarize the cost to, so I think that that would be a good step in starting to get some numbers, just to see where we're at with that. And so, I'll plan on trying to schedule that in. And Lynn, could we make a call at the office just to double-check how Jeff is making out with his engineering? I know he was pretty eager to get in there and get that going and I know we're all getting busy again, but fall's gonna be upon us very quick again, so.
And speaking of library, I just wanna say, I know there was an email that went out this week, guys, is there any update on the roof shingles?
Slate.
He said that he was supposed to be scheduling, his response to me was that he was going to get a lift scheduled for the week of the fourth. So I'll have to ask the department to make sure they, if they see it, because I won't be here, that they let me know that he's been around.
Lynn, if they, if they let you know that he's around with it or whatever, if you can have me called, I'd like to also look at it because it seems strange that there are pieces of that slate coming down, not entire slate. Unless they're coming to the ground and cracking.
Well, the sprinklers might have maybe been from when they were structuring.
Those pieces are probably from when they did the slate, a long time ago, that she picked up. There were two full slates that came up.
I saw the full ones.
Yeah.
So you think those pieces are from the first slate?
I think they are.
You don't walk on the building, don't pick up, see slate everywhere.
Because we had slate, then we had plastic, then we have slate again.
Those little pieces, that's when they were
Oh, so you don't think it's a leak issue?
I don't think so.
Well, that'd be nice.
You still wanna call just so you can
I'd like to verify with it if he's gonna walk in the lift with himself, just to check it out myself. It'd be nice to confirm.
The time in advance?
Well, I'm not so worried about that, but it'd be nice to confirm that there's not an issue with that building and the slate.
No, the lift will pick you and Paul up at the same time.